Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call over the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority. Just have a little call, please.
Collier, Gilbert, here. Franklin?
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Ayer.
Here.
Seabolt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Stroller.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. I do declare a forum. We didn't get anybody to sign up to give our invocation tonight, but I'm going to invite Gloria Brown to give our prayer for us this evening.
Father, we just come up for you tonight thanking you for the gift of the state, thanking you for the gift that you've given to us and our council people and the decisions they make for our city. Father, we just ask you for wisdom tonight for decisions that will benefit all those concerned. We ask that you bless their lives and the time that they take from their families to be able to serve in this capacity. We just praise you and give you Thanksgiving now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Gloria. Item number one is consent agenda. See, it's just one I received through the minutes of the regular PMA meeting of July 16th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Every second.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Out of four comments from those assembled concerned with PMA, is there anyone who has a comment? Anyone comment? Thank you. Out of five proclamation commendation reports and inquiries by the governing body, staff, council, any inquiries or information reports. Seeing none, we move on to item six, new business. Do you need business? Item seven?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Procall Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer? Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Now called over the regular meeting of the City Council of City of Perry. It is August 6th, 2018. Procall, please.
Collier, Gilbert, here. Franklin?
Here.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Here.
Seabolt?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Stroller?
Here.
Johnson?
Here. I do declare a forum. See, the consent agenda, item one, it has items A through L. Are there any of those you'd like to discuss further?
Item L.
Item L.
And I would move approval of A through K.
Second.
Second, thank you. Procall Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Questions on item L?
I would move it be tabled in the next meeting. It has bridges in it and it needs to be fixed.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a second?
Second.
It'll be tabled to the next meeting on approval of this thought. Procall, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Pig. Any comments from those assembled concerning the agenda of the council this evening? Any comments from four? Any comments? Seeing none, item five, proclamation commendation reports and inquiries by the governing body. Council, staff.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, coming to my mind today, we've never done anything with that little bridge project down there on 15th Street, south of Walmart, where that little dip kept creating. Whatever come in that, we asked for something to be done.
The council decided not to pursue it. I think Bryce can probably bring up some more information about that.
Well, I don't know that that's necessarily true.
I don't ever remember.
I think that we got wrapped up with a whole lot of other work. Our engineer didn't feel that we would be successful in doing anything there. And it became really a matter of cost benefit. How much money, I mean, we, they refused. We sent them the money.
Well, I know that. Last time I remembered, we'd asked Stephen to go look at it. I thought.
Yeah.
We'd call him back to a meeting, I think.
Yeah.
After he'd already left.
Yeah, I mean, I think we universally believed that it would be, it wouldn't be cost effective. I mean, we would have to, they weren't going to do anything, so we were going to have to bring a breach of contracts. And I think it was, you know, the engineer's opinion, you know, I got to put an opinion together that was able to be supported.
I thought we were going to fix it ourselves.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't. No, I don't remember.
I remember asking him to go, we called him back to a meeting.
Uh huh.
And asked him to go by and take a look at it.
You could, you could.
And I thought we'd just said, what would it cost us to fix that?
Right, I did.
Do you remember?
I did get by. It was dark already when I went out there and looked at it, so with just the headlights, I looked at it the best that I could. And then I got in touch with Sam to get a little bit more of the background. It's hard to tell. I would have liked to seen it right when it was starting to fail and not after it was already kind of band-aided again. But to me, the best thing is just, I mean, you basically have to remove the pavement and put all new in in order to not have differential settlement. But that's about all I could tell from looking at it in the dark. And then the past couple of times when I've come down, I've driven over it again.
And the question was, or at least the issue with the other engineer that I spoke to, even if we did that, and even if, even if we filled it, would it, would it be appreciably different?
Probably not a lot different.
I mean, and that's what I got, not, you know, not a lot, not a lot different. I mean, it doesn't matter what you're running on, concrete or whatever, it just seems to, you know.
Well, now that it is, now that it has settled with just a mill operation and an overlay mill.
Well, has it gotten worse? I mean, I haven't gone, I haven't gone over it.
I wouldn't say it's appreciably worse, but it's definitely noticeable. And I think it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I travel over two or three times a day. I don't think it's gotten worse.
I don't think it's gotten worse.
But it's still there.
Yeah, exactly. And I travel at least two or three times a day myself, so. And you're in a truck and I'm in a car, so. But taking, taking a mill operation and leveling it out now that it has stopped settling?
It might. You have to make sure you've got deep enough down there to take the bump out.
And either side of that area?
I'd probably go that if you're going to mill it, I think you're going to have, you're going to, you don't want to be patching it. You want to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Set, whether it be three inches or two inches, whatever it would, to take the bump out, but you want to do the whole thing.
Does cost benefit?
Well, they refused. You know, they came back once, they refused, and I couldn't really get. I mean, to do that at that point, you've got to, you've got to do what we did with respect to the sidewalk. You know, sidewalk was easy. I mean, some of the connect, the connections were not low enough, you know? And there was a contract that said they had to be at this depth and they weren't at this depth. You know, this one, I mean, is it faulty? Does it work? Is the culvert in? Is the road reasonably smooth? I mean, you drive some of the other roads in the community. I mean, you are patching. You're, you know, you are doing a culvert and you're meeting, you know, road here and road here. You're putting something over it. I mean, it's rare, I mean, it's rarely going to be.
My, my understanding, it was all relative to the original compaction of the backfill that set the back, the one bridge abutment. And how they filled it in backfill and compacted it. And I would say that it was a lousy job of compaction, which caused it to then put a soil in.
I think they said that it met the test. I mean, that was the.
That's the funny part when we say it met the test. I don't know, since I've been on the council, how many times we say it met the test? And basically, we didn't have an inspector on the job.
Why certainly wasn't there.
Yeah.
And it should have been tested. It lifts because it was a deep backfill. And it should have been backfilled in one foot increments or whatever that is. And tested at varying points, not necessarily ever lift, but it should have been compacted.
I've caught some grief in the recent past, in the very recent past, about us having some inspectors on some of the jobs we got. Why in the world we need that? This is a perfect example why we have to have inspectors. Same thing with the sidewalk project, you know? Perfectly good reason. So anyway, sorry about.
Bill, at the time that that was being inspected, I was getting reports frequently on the compaction and on the testing of the concrete and all of that. So the reports they were sending us were meeting the requirements. I don't know where it went awry.
But who, who filled out the reports? I mean.
I.
If I'm saying, I mean, I could write down it met the requirements, whether it did or didn't.
Yeah, I can't tell you. I just know that I was getting formal reports sent to me on compaction and concrete testing. The folks that put in the culvert, were they the ones that were doing the backfill and the compaction? Yes. Before, in preparation for Land Street? Yeah. Really? You back me up.
You stood up, you're on your own.
Might as well come up here. It's my opinion, and I'm not a street or bridge builder. But when that was excavated for print, they made vertical cuts on each side about, I don't know, 10, 15 feet deep. They were on the north side of the culvert, the south side of the culvert, it was cut vertically. And then it was backfilled in lifts and tested, compacted, all the way up. It would be my opinion, the proper way to do that would be to have cut it back at about a 45 degree angle instead of vertically. And then fill that in lifts. But I'm not a street builder, not a bridge builder. But when they started doing that, I got with Sam and went out and looked at it. And I questioned whether they would ever be able to satisfy the compaction needs up against the vertical wall. But if that's the way it was designed, it was built to, as per the design, we've got what we got. So that's my opinion. That's my comment. But would you agree, or disagree?
I think it's more means and methods and safety if they want to step the walls. But I mean, just look like a water line or a sewer line trench. A lot of times they're using an excavator. It's going to have vertical walls. But I mean, if they did it, it acted lifts, if not more than a foot, then it should, theoretically, it should work.
They did it per the design, all the way up, but something caused settling that wasn't anticipated.
But there was a big rain. I mean, isn't that what happened?
About three inch rain.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how big a three inch rain was.
I do remember a big rain.
But there was a rain.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. Move on.
Thank you. We move item six, city manager, your remarks.
Mayor, the city's going to partner with Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce to welcome Seth Wadley Auto Group into town. With a grand opening on Saturday, the 18th. This will be a number of different projects. This is mingle. And also Meet the Maroons, and also grand opening for Seth Wadley. There'll be bands, free food. Free food, free. Woo! You got that? Free, that's the real word there. And that's August 18th? August 18th.
Uh, August eighteenth.
Evening out at the.
Yeah, what else is August eighteenth? What else is August eighteenth?
Five o'clock.
Yeah, something else important.
One of us will not be here.
Two of us.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five to nine.
Five to nine, yes. So, we appreciate that. Also, uh, council, you remember at the, um, July twelfth strategic plan meeting we had? There was a pre-assessment that, that we sent around and we got seven of the responses back. And this is a, uh, a memo and some different colored sheets is exactly how the results were. One was compiling it, starting at the top with, with the green, which is a clear community, uh, strength, and then working down. And then, uh, the next four pages is the detail. It's the exact, uh, line that you filled out and who filled it, I mean, and, uh, what the results were be, were. Sorry about that. Uh, interesting reading. Uh, we'll do it again in a couple of months, I mean, six months, we'll do our mid-year. But there was consensus that we would do a mid-year strategic plan meeting as well. Certainly, the biggest strength that we have is our location, right on the interstate. And I didn't really see anything that was, was troubling, there were no, uh, fa- uh, failures and there were no inadequacies listed. So, I think that, that we have some work to do, especially in, in, um, business development and our promotion and how we plan, but other than that, we're, we're headed in the right direction for right now. So, it'll be interesting to see how, uh, how we feel about, um, the same assessment and same items in six months. Five months, basically. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments? Move item seven, public hearing on closing a portion of Fifteenth Street right away at Perry Plaza. Received and recommendation from Planning Commission.
You want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay.
You are representing?
Okay. Representing. Uh, it was recommended by the Planning Commission that this piece of property be closed and then vacated. Uh, as you're probably aware, the building was built several, several years ago. And it's, uh, less than four feet out onto the right-of-way. So, we're suggesting that a four-foot strip be closed that encompasses the end of the building. And there are, uh, there was protests from the utility, uh, holders on that property, but that's standard procedure for them. As far as we know, there are no utilities under the, and, uh, Bryce will cover that in documentation so that it would not prevent them from tending to the utilities in the future. So, it, just some cleanup on the abstract for the building. Any questions?
In other words, the building was built a little bit long on its east end. So, we have to, uh, close some of the right-of-way on the west side of the street. So, the building doesn't have to be chainsawed, stay off the right. It's your pleasure.
Assistant hearing?
Assistant hearing.
Well, we conducted a public hearing, we heard. Item eight, consider approval ordinance twenty eighteen fourteen, closing of public use of a portion of the east edge of Perry Plaza, which is part of Fifteenth Street right-of-way in the north and west addition of City of Perry, Noble County, State of Oklahoma. We've run a pat, flat thereof, and particularly described as a part of the north half of the northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter, section twenty-one, Township twenty-one, range one west, Noble County, Oklahoma. No, I'm not gonna read all the rest of it. Backdown this ordinance closes a portion of Fifteenth Street right-of-way and protects the interest of the public utilities.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you.
Gilbert, Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion on emergency, second.
Thank you.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Item nine, conduct public hearing on closing of north six feet of alley, of the alley, north of Perry Wrestling Park, received recommendation from Perry Planning Commission.
That description is not right.
It's not.
For the alley?
It's just the six feet north of the wrestling park, not a north six feet.
Well, no, it's, it's.
It's closing the north six feet of the alley, north of Perry Wrestling.
Well, no.
That alley went all the way up to next street.
Yeah, let me explain it, if I can. Uh, turn to, uh, to number ten, to item ten in the back. Uh, wh- wh- what I did was I took, uh, a shortened description. The description is in this ordinance, and the description is also in the notice that was sent out, okay? It's the north six feet of the south sixty-six feet of the platted twenty-five-foot alley. And I call it six feet of the alley. We define it as six feet of the alley. But Earl is correct, but the legal is in the ordinance, and the legal was also in the notice. Uh, and so, I mean, it's all there in the agenda. What we did is we just used an excerpt of that as a, uh, so we didn't have to repeat it and, and waste more paper, so. It is okay, the way it is, but, but, but good point, yes. Yeah, I actually had to call a title lawyer. If, 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 uh, Mr. Leach would've been there, I could've asked him. But I had the darnedest time trying to figure out how to define six foot when you've already got forty feet. And so, I had to call somebody and we, we had a extended phone conversation, but, but I did get it.
You could've, you could've called a surveyor, he could've helped.
Yeah, well, if I could've.
He could've found one.
Mr. Leach, we're, we're having a hard time finding them, aren't we?
It has proven to be difficult.
Yes, proven to be difficult.
But the Planning Commission recommends to the council that this be approved. It's, uh, a little piece of land needed to extend the wrestling park a few more feet to the north. They acquired permission from the Iduboy, uh, people for a matching piece of property on their lot. And, uh, we got the same protest from, uh, utility holders, which is, again, standard procedure. Um, so, and, and Bryce will cover their interests the same way with documentation that allows them to access their utilities if and when they are need to.
Thank you. Move on to item ten, if there's no questions or comments needed on that.
With approval of item?
I have to read it, I have to read it indirectly, sorry. Item ten, consider approval ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen, closing to the public use of a portion of an alley more particularly described as follows. North six feet of the south sixty-six feet of the platted twenty-five-foot alley lying between lots fifty and fifty-one, block twelve, the original Perry, City of Perry, Noble County, State of Oklahoma. According to the recorded plat thereof, hereafter referred to as a six feet of the alley. There's repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, and declaring an emergency. We have a motion on twenty eighteen fifteen.
So, no.
Second. Second, thank you. Ropel, Dixon?
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Second.
Thank you, Ropel.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to item eleven. Consider approval of budget amendment appropriating additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund Reserve to pay for the anticipated loss between accounts receivable and accounts payable for the Perry Municipal, Perry Memorial Hospital Authority. Anyone have any questions?
Is this a Bryce or Merritt deal?
Well, I had, uh, you know, I wanted to keep track with, with Alan Lovelace of where we were. And I thought it was important where we were. And so, I asked him, when you, when you figure out where we are, will you give me, uh, you know, an update? And so, he gave me, uh, an update, and the update is in, is recounted in this background. Uh, you know, the further you get out on accounts, uh, receivable, the, the more they go down. And this was the estimate that he had, so I sent these off to Russ, and Russ looked at them. And, uh, it also takes into consideration the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we already put up for purchase of the property. Uh, and, and he thought to be, uh, you know, to be fully transparent and so that you would know where we are prior to September, when we're gonna start, look again at the projects that we discussed at the, uh, you know, at our study session and kinda get a priority there that, that, that you kind of know where you are. You know, a budget document is just that, it's an estimate, but it's something you need to go by. And, and the thought was to, to get this number to you as quickly as possible, so you kind of know what we, uh, should prepare for. If you remember, when we had our, our, uh, our budget hearings, I actually, uh, spoke out on the issue that we had some things on the horizon, you know, some issues on the horizon. And one of them was this, this hospital payment that, that was gonna have to be made in April first. So, in looking at our budget, we needed to look at, you know, at that possibility. So, it could be less, it could be more. This is the best guess that they have right now. And I'll tell you, it seems like a lot, I mean, as you are, but, uh, you know, up in Blackwell, they would, they would laugh at this number, having, having already paid fourteen, fifteen, seventeen times of thi- this number, uh, for their hospital, you know, to keep it going. And you've got yours locked in, you, you've got it locked in with a, with an operating agreement for the next five years, so.
Just a quick clarification from my own thoughts. We originally had budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand for the transfer.
Mm-hmm.
We spent a hundred and forty-nine of that. That two hundred thousand's left over, is that rolling into the four-fifty, or is it additional to the fifty?
Uh.
It's rolling into.
Rolling into.
It's rolling into it, yes. It's grilling into it to get to the five, to get to the, yeah, to get to that number, yes.
And bottom line, we're gonna have to make a stillwater hole. I mean, we have to. And this is our best estimate of what that number's gonna be as of right now. Always subject to change.
I would move approval of the amendment. Second.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ayer?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Item twelve, consider approval of change order number three in amount twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars to Evans and Sussex Construction for additional work performed at the Jackson and Ninth Street intersection as part of the two thousand and eighteen improvement project. Hey, Stephen, Frank, MKEC's here to talk just about it.
All right. So, at the last council meeting, I was tasked with taking another look at this intersection because the, uh, it got pretty steep over there at the connection between Ninth and Jackson on the south side of the street. And so, hopefully, you guys have an exhibit in your packet that looks something similar to this. It's color-coded there. So, I guess I'll back up to get us where we are today, and then I will show you what's being proposed here as an option and if you'd like to move forward. So, just real quick recap, uh, Jackson Street from Ninth to Eighth, um, had a big water hole in the middle of it. And the survey confirmed it that they actually, the lower part of the street was in the middle. And so, we reversed it, made a high point in the middle, pushed water both east and west. And so, with the Eighth Street intersection, there's two valley getters sitting water on east. If Steph comes west here, and there's a planned valley getter there, just a little bit east of where the sidewalk is, uh, just south of the church. The idea there is the water that's on the north side of the street and south gets into the curbing getter on Ninth Street and heads down to the nearest storm sewer. Cause that was the other thing, there was no storm sewer, sewer near enough to bring it up there to drain to. Uh, so, we had to figure out a way of surface draining it. Um, in the existing condition, there was kind of a wetlands on the south side of Jackson there as the water was having a hard time moving from the ditch into the, into the curbing getter there. Um, in terms of scope, um, at the beginning of this project, so a year ago, when we, when we broke it out into programs, we tried to go identify ahead of time where we wanted to start and stop each street. And then we'd reevaluate once we got survey and then once we got the design. Uh, most of the, your north-south streets seem to be a little bit higher and have crowns. So, it, in a lot of cases, it didn't make sense to go through the intersections unless we had to. Eighth is a good example where we weren't planning to, but we did have to due to the water. Um, here, um, honestly, it was keeping it in scope that we could tie in. We found a, a method of getting the water, um, around the corner to where it would flow. And so, um, so that's kinda how we arrived at where we are today. And I, and I do agree, it's steep, there's no doubt about it. Um, so, this option here that you see in front of you would be an option to basically regrade the intersection and reduce those slopes. So, um, I just took a hand level out there several weeks ago, and it was roughly like a eleven-point-eight percent slope there at the, in the corner of that return. If we would regrade this, we could get closer to that four-point-three, so it's gonna reduce it quite a bit. Um, in terms of the, of the color coding there, so, the whole change order, um, based on quantity is twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The amount associated with the blue and then the kind of purplish-blue curbing getter that would be additional, that, that accounts for twenty thousand of it. So, twenty thousand of this change order is basically because you're going farther on your project. And the, the area in yellow was already included in change order two that we passed, I think it was last council meeting, for three additional blocks of Jackson. The only, um, effort that is duplicated would be, um, the red there, um, right there in the east side of the intersection and the green curbing getter. That if we were gonna reduce those grades, they already have, you know, the base lift of asphalt in. It sounds like maybe next week they'll get the final lift in, and that curbing getter is already cast in there. So, if we did move forward, those two items would have to be replaced. And so, that's about forty-five hundred dollars, I believe, so.
You're talking about this red and green area?
Yep, red and green would have to come out in order to, you know, re-transition in because right now, it's like an eleven percent, we're gonna reduce it to four.
Are you, you're planning on going all the way to Twelfth Street though, right?
Yes, we would go, so I'm assuming that's where, I think the next step is to move over to the pharmacy alley now that all the one-gas relocates are done. So, how I envision this moving forward is they'll put the surface lift of asphalt in for the, the time for now, going on east. And then when they come back, when Evans would come back to do from Ninth to Twelfth, that's when they would redo this intersection. So, there will be a period of time for probably a month while they're working on the pharmacy that it would have to be basically final conditions if we weren't to reconstruct the intersection.
Is that an intersection of four-way stop, I think?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, and to be.
So, changes in grade like that, it's not gonna, everybody's gonna come to a stop, so we don't have.
Right. If there were no stop signs here, this wouldn't have been acceptable. But I thought it was a, a decent trade-off for now the street drains, and I did know that it was gonna steepen it up. But I think for everybody, until you see it, it's hard to really know, oh, wow, that's.
It's deep.
It's really deep.
It's really deep.
And this will take care of the drainage issue.
And this will take care of the drainage issue and the pooling of water that we have on the south side of Jackson, east of Ninth. I know I've been there a couple of times after the last large rains. One we had about three weeks ago, there's a sizable, I think I sent you pictures of that particular one.
Well, it was kind of dammed up there anyway.
Yeah, that was unacceptable. And then you came, I think the next week, after the rain, and took one. And then this last rain, the pool was even bigger.
Right, right.
So that will take care of that issue.
Yes, it should, like today, if they would go in and put that surface lift of asphalt in there. And then I called your inspector, because I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything blocking the flow, because according to the plans, there is grade coming across the road and getting it down into Ninth. So it should work. So if it's not, then maybe some grades aren't hit, or there is an obstruction. And when I called on one of those occasions, there was still the BMP stuck in the, it was a sandbag, basically.
That's what I was, I went to church that one morning, and there was a big pool out there.
Right.
So I went and removed the sandbag.
Right.
And let it flow. And by the time we come out of church, it was pretty much let down.
That's right. Because when I called the inspector, I said, now that the, you know, now that you have your base asphalt in there, and there's nothing really going to wash away, you can pull those out. So there's really no need for anything obstructing it, once they have the base list of asphalt in. So, yes, it should flow.
Stephen, just to clarify, if the sandbag was out of the way, and if the final layer of asphalt was installed, we would not have had any pooling of water?
Correct. You should not have any water standing in there.
It was pooling, because it was still an inch or two shy of being at the correct finished height. It couldn't get over the curbing gutter to go away.
I think on some of the occasions, that was the case, and then there were others where it had built up into the curbing gutter, but the sandbags was preventing it from turning to.
Yeah. So when I pulled that sandbag, I mean, it rushed out of there.
Right.
But it looked really bad, because it's holding water, but it's because the street isn't finished yet.
That's true.
So just for clarification, I'm not understanding this red area over here. You're going to go in and reconstruct that and put a final lift on that? And then when you come back to do from Ninth to Twelfth, that's where you're going to start, at the end of the red?
Yep. We would start on the west edge of that concrete plume that's right over there.
Okay, all right. So you wouldn't come back and tear that out and start with it completely?
Yeah, I would start right here.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yep.
So how far north and south are you going to mill that top of Ninth off then? How far are you going to go south?
It's past that driveway.
Of that house?
Yep, of that house, to tie in. And essentially, what we're doing is we're lowering, we're going to lower that intersection, and we're going to kind of, instead of having a perfect crown, it's going to be graded more to the east into that curbing gutter that's draining everything.
Well, I sat there and looked at, and it's just my personal opinion. I thought if you put a final lift on it, that it would be fine. I didn't think it was that steep, to be honest with you, the way it is now. So that's just my opinion.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Bill. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Frank. Propelled.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item thirteen. Consider approval of project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation on the Perry Sidewalk Project Phase One, and payment of the local share of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Does this not include Phase Two or not? Anyone? This will get the agreement between Eighth and Fifteenth, both sides of the firm. This is our portion of cost to that side.
We paid twenty-some thousand this, two, three months, two, three, it's going to be enough.
As for the engineering?
Engineering.
Any questions, comments, or motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Yes. Item fourteen. Consider approval of school resource officer agreement. Did I get that across to you? This group provides for the furnishing of an SRO officer to the Perry Schools in consideration annual payment by the Perry School to the city of forty thousand dollars annually, and payable in equal monthly payments.
So there will not be a second SRO, we'll only have one?
Correct.
And they will cover all counts. That person will cover all.
Just like you did the last couple of months of this last year.
When do, when do the payments start? Prior to the month, or after the month?
I don't think we've quite worked that out yet.
It's in the agreement, it's monthly. It starts July first. I mean, we got to sign the agreement first, but, I mean, they're going to.
Starts July first, like?
It's July, yeah. I mean, that's what the agreement says. It's July to June thirtieth. And, I mean, they owe us that money over that term. Of course, we don't have any duties until school's in session. And when school's in session, they then start working. But that term is, you know, set out in the agreement.
I would just rather see them pay us, say, at the first of the month, rather than us finance the whole month, and then they pay us back.
Yeah, it's pretty much, you know, our cost is more than this amount. They're just reimbursing a portion of it. I don't know if I stuck an exact time of payment. Let me see, it's, the term is, like I said, July first to June thirtieth. Payable in equal monthly payments. It doesn't say when it's due.
There is a very minor script errors there, fourteen point four.
Okay. Oh, the. Right here, I'll get that.
Comments? Questions?
Just out of curiosity, how far short does it fall? Well, for him, he's a lieutenant. I mean, a basic police officer, sixty thousand.
Roll that in.
All in.
Yes.
As a lieutenant, he's probably more like seventy-five, maybe?
I would have said seventy-two to seventy-five.
Seventy-two to seventy-five, so, I mean, that's how, forty to seventy-two, seventy-five. But, I mean, he will get called out. I mean, if there's business to be done, he will be called out of the school, so he'll still be working for us, so.
I mean, he won't be working in the summer for them.
No.
So really, nine months, approximately.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's well said, yes. Okay, thank you.
Can we grant this, they're going to pay July and August promptly, then, I guess?
They first have to approve it. We've seen it first, right?
That's correct. I think they meet next week.
Yeah. You know, they gave me a draft, and I went through and.
Well, I mean, technically, you should already be on the job then, because it's two weeks before school, so.
Well, he's only, you know, he goes there when it's on, that's part of it, when it's in session, and.
It's written here.
Yeah.
Has he got a room between all the schools?
Yes.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah, I mean, the draft that I had, you know, had different schools. I mean, I made substantial changes to it, because it was like one for each school. But, you know, this is a, you know, all the schools. And of course, that's all subject to the budget, but the budget is what the budget is right now, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Propelled, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item fifteen. Consider approval of payment of invoices in the amount of one eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eight cents to MKEC for engineering, MKEC Engineering, for engineering survey services on two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Street Improvement Plan. Those improvements are Jackson Street, Twelfth and Ninth Streets, a survey of Park Lane, and Park Drive. You seen the detailed explanation in the attached paperwork form? In motion for approval.
Motion to approve the invoice.
Second. Thank you. Propelled, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Item sixteen. Consider approval of payment of invoice in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents to MKEC Engineering for professional services, including utility coordination for one gas north of Seventh Street drainage, construction support for the two thousand and eighteen Street improvements, and pharmacy alley plan revisions. And a whole slew of small projects they filed out for us.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? Propelled, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. Item seventeen. Consider approval for the Perry Memorial Hospital Authority trustee number eight. As you see there in the background, Jenny Wade was nominated, and she should be placed in trustee number eight.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Propelled, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item eighteen. Any new business need be brought before council's decision, any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to number eighteen. Consider convening executive session for purposes of performance evaluation of City Manager Larry Fennell, person two-five-oh-seven-seven, B-one.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Propelled, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
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 We need a motion reconvene?
Motion reconvene?
Second.
You, Dixie?
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Seagull?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Seagull?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.